This evening are question screeners Colleen Grogan and Paula Cacciatore. Timekeepers Sharon Giacomo and Michael N. Anatoumouche. Question runners Tristan Baca and Freda Baca, Mercy Swanson and Ellen Murphy Sisomeros. Thank you ladies. Raton PBW is a nonpartisan organization dedicated to improving the lives and promoting the advancement of women through personal, political, and professional development while influencing our government, improving our community, and providing a friendly supportive forum for networking and votes. Raton PBW is honored to present this candidate forum tonight so that citizens can be informed about local issues and get to know the candidates before they head to the polls. Tonight's forum will be conducted to be fair to all candidates and to the audience. Before I introduce our candidates, I would like to thank KRTN for setting up the sound system and broadcasting the forum live. And our city clerk Tricia Garcia is going to make a brief election announcement.
I'm just here to let everybody know that the last day for early and/or absentee voting will be Friday, February 28th. After that, the only day to vote is Election Day. Polls will open at 7:00 a.m. and close at 7:00 p.m. on March 4th. And if you have any questions or concerns in that City Hall, then you can call or come by. Thank you.
I would now like to introduce our city commission candidates. For District 1, we have Sandra Mance. For District 2, we have Donald Giacomo and Bobby Ladue. Iris Simpson will not be able to make it tonight due to a family emergency. For District 3, we have Christopher Candelario and Ronald Chavez. We also have with us tonight two candidates for municipal judge, Linda Zufflocke and Roy Manfredi. Our timekeepers will give each candidate a 30-second warning and will advise when time has elapsed for a response. They will provide a visual and an audible warning. Each candidate will be allowed a three-minute opening statement and a two-minute closing statement. Audience members will be allowed to submit questions from the floor, which will be prescreened for appropriateness. Each candidate will have a minute and a half to answer. We will proceed with opening statements. If anyone in the audience has questions to submit, please pass them down to the end of the aisle or raise your hand and our runners will pick them up. We will try to time the forum so that we finish closing statements at 9:00 p.m. The first candidate for our opening statement will be Sandra Mance.
My name is Sandra Mance. I'm better known as Sandy. And I ran on a campaign or a slogan last year of the fact that I would be your voice and I'd like to continue to be your voice. I want to thank BP- not BPW, PBW for having this forum. And I'd also like to thank all of you in the audience for attending. And for the people that are listening on the radio, we really do appreciate the fact that you're trying to be an informed voter. I have always tried to vote in the best interest of the citizens of Raton and also to listen to your concern. And I can see the wheels rolling around in your little head saying, "Well, what about the increase in the garbage rates?" Well, before I voted for the increase in the garbage rates, I did some research. The first year that I researched, the enterprise fund, better known as the garbage, overspent $300,000. In other words, they spent $300,000 more than they had in revenues. And the next year I researched, there was a $150,000 deficit in the fund. And I really didn't feel we could continue this way. So of course, I voted in favor of the garbage increase. I am a certified commissioner. I believe the only certified commissioner in the history of the city of Raton. And it's called a municipal official legislative institute. And it consists of about two weeks of classroom work as well as an additional five projects that you have to do to complete to get this certification. It's taught by attorneys, parliamentarians, judges, a whole array of people that give very good information from everything from parliamentary procedure to the procurement code, the Open Meetings Act, and many things that you have to have knowledge about to be a commissioner. I'd like to just close with a little food for thought. There was a very wise person that wrote, "Change the things you can, accept the things you cannot change, and pray for the wisdom to know the difference." Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate to do an opening statement will be Donald Giacomo.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen in the audience and also ladies of the Raton Professional Business Women. My name is Donald Giacomo. And I don't have figures like Sandy has, but I'm going to give you a background of my experiences and let you be the judge as far as my qualifications. I was born in Raton, 1944, at the Donovan Hospital, a half a block up the street. It's no longer there, but it was across from the old Chivina Building and Ford Company there. I graduated from Raton High School in 1962. And after graduation, it was about a day and a half, and I joined the U.S. Marine Corps, serving four and a half years and obtaining the rank of sergeant on discharge, before discharge. I returned to Raton and worked on the Santa Fe Railroad at the Brackman for about three months. These were winter months, running the routes from La Jolla to Albuquerque. I decided railroading was not for me. Basically because back then, when you hired, you were hired on at the exit board and you worked all the hours that the regular people or employees didn't want. So I realized then that railroading was not for me. I packed up and headed for Seattle. Boeing Company was in hiring process. And of course, the job I candidate didn't turn out because I was late getting there and the quota was already filled. I ended up working for a Boeing subcontractor, a machinist, for a year and a half. And again, I found out that Seattle was the worst type of weather. So I returned to Raton and decided to enroll in Trinidad State Union College where I obtained a two-year associate degree in education. Again, I did not follow my instincts as being an educator. Kaiser Steel was in the hiring mode at their underground coal mine, and I was hired in as a general laborer. Back then, general labor for an eight-hour day shift was $18.75. That's $18.75 for an eight-hour day. Things have changed. I've worked in coal mines for over 35 years here in New Mexico and also spent a few years in Southern Colorado over by Trinidad. Again, from mine labor, went, got a job as a machine operator to production and maintenance foreman, and then I bit outside to the surface mine. On the surface mine, I was a driller and blaster. Filled in as a scraper operator, hog truck driver, anything they needed extra. But basically ended up as a production supervisor, a safety supervisor, safety director, and then manager of safety at two different mines. I supervised crews of seven to 13 men and was responsible for equipment value that's over $60 million or more. If elected to this position as Raton City Commissioner, I would do everything in my power to better myself in knowing the needs of Raton and the concerns of citizens. Raton is my home and I will not let it alter. I thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Our next opening statement will be Linda Zufflocke. Sorry about that.
My name is Linda Zufflocke and I'm a candidate for municipal judge. Since I'm newer than everyone else here to Raton, I want to tell you a little bit about myself. I'm married to Jim McMahon and I have a son and his wife and two wonderful grandsons who live in Denver. My husband Jim is a Colfax County firefighter with the Rapid Response Unit, and he's also a member of the Blackwater Draw Band. I was born in Austin, Texas, many, many years ago. And my father was an attorney who spent his summers while he was in law school as a park ranger at Mesa Verde National Park. And it was from him that I learned to love this area of the country. My great-grandfather built a cabin between the Spanish Peaks before I was born, and I've been going there since I was an infant. When my parents and I would come out here for the summer vacations, we would drive from Austin, Texas to Clayton, and then we'd spend the night in Clayton because we didn't want to miss any of the pretty scenery. And we'd drive over here the next day and eat at the Melody Lane for breakfast and then drive onto our cabin. So I've been coming here most of my life, every year. I also went to summer camp near Rosiada, New Mexico, and lived in Santa Fe for a few years after I got out of college. So I have deep roots in this area, even though I haven't actually lived here very long. I have a journalism degree from the University of Colorado and a master's degree in urban studies from Trinity University in San Antonio. I also have a law degree from St. Mary's University in San Antonio. And I've been an attorney for about 36 years, licensed in Texas. And I also founded a licensed adoption agency in San Antonio. And in 25 years, we placed about 5,000 children for adoption. During this same time, I became involved in municipal government. And I was living in a little town called Chavino Park. And over the years, I've served as municipal judge, mayor, alderman, chairman of the Board of Adjustments, city attorney, and whatever else I could find to do. And I found public service really rewarding. And that's why I am running for municipal judge here, because I want to do what I can to serve the people of this city. I believe I'm qualified to be municipal judge, and I'm asking for your vote.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next opening statement is Bobby Ladue.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. That kind of reminds me of one of our commission meetings out there. The audience is full out there. I'm glad that you all took the time to come out and participate in what we have to do tonight. I think this is very important. I think that a community that is informed is not only supportive, but it makes better decisions with respect to the people that are trying to serve. I want to, before I get started, I want to thank the Raton Business Professional Women. I think that, you know, they're a bunch of movers and shakers. They've always been one of my most favorite civic groups, and I tell them that all the time. And that's because they get behind an issue and follow through with it, and I thank you for doing that. I'd also like to thank the people that decided to run for election to the commission. I think that I've preached over and over, people getting involved, wanting them to get involved, and so on and so forth. And we've got some people that stepped up to the plate, and I have a lot of respect for that. I also have a lot of respect for the electorate. I think that, you know, being judged by your peers, excuse me, is not the easiest thing in the world to do, but, you know, I think that everybody ought to have at least one term. My name is Bobby Ladue. I'm the current mayor of Raton, and I've been involved in political office here in Raton for the last 22 years. You know, I was former president of the Raton Municipal League. I was on the board of directors of the Municipal League for seven years. I'm also a former two-term Raton City Commissioner back in the late 80s and early 90s. Raton has always had a fond place in my heart for me. I think that it's a beautiful community. There's a lot we have to offer. I don't think we've always capitalized on that, but we're getting better. We're going through some tough times. I think I didn't realize how tough it was when I was asked to participate here a year, about 12 months, 13 months ago. But I think that this commission has made a lot of progress. I want to thank my fellow commissioners for being supportive of the vision that we've had and things of this nature. I think, you know, having a community is like building a house. If you don't have a strong foundation, then you won't have a strong house. So we've been working in that direction. We need to continue in that direction, and there's a lot of tough decisions that need to be made. I think that the electorate out there should take into consideration the people that need to make those decisions, if they're capable of making those decisions, and number one is how willing are they to make those tough decisions? I think this past commission has shown that we're willing to do that. I'm willing to continue to do that should I get enough votes on March 4th. And I just encourage you all to vote. It's your right, and I expect you guys to do it. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Our next opening statement is Ronald Chavez.
Good evening. My name's Ron Chavez. I think I know most of you in here. For those that don't, that I don't know, I'd just like to give a little bio real quick. I was born in Raton, born and raised. I went to Raton High School, graduated. I spent a short, brief stint in college, and then I went into the service. I'm a twice-wounded, disabled veteran. I had a business here for a while. I retired from Kaiser Steel, from the UMWA, and from the U.S. Post Office. That's where I think most of you might have seen me, there licking stamps at the front window. So the main objective for me getting into this race is I would like to see that the commission, that we work together and get some fiscal stabilization for our community. You know, we've had a lot of turmoil in the past. Well, what I'm suggesting is that the past is the past. Okay, we can't do anything about that, but we can do a lot from this day forward. And if we pledge ourselves to do it from this day on, we can work to make this a good city. If elected, I'll ensure that all the city expenditures are controlled and monitored to the very best of my ability. I'll ensure that the commission does not squander, ignore, or pass on any viable opportunity for economic development or growth. And I'll demand of my fellow commissioners to read, study, and thoroughly understand all items presented for consideration prior to us voting on any issue. I'll never go outside the Raton area looking for a new employee for a city position until we've exhausted our local area first. I don't believe that we have to go to all these areas to hire new ones, as you've seen in the past, that has backfired on us. I would like to see a commission that'll work in harmony and unison with one goal in mind, and that's a betterment of Raton. I will ensure that the city commission that I serve on, if I get elected, will work closely and unison with the city manager to achieve these goals. And at all times, I want to make sure that we're keeping the people of Raton informed on these issues. Finally, I don't seek this position lightly. I have no hidden agenda. I don't have a hidden agenda at all. The only agenda that I have is for a better Raton. I've lived here all my life, and I love it here. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next opening statement is Christopher Candelario.
My name is Chris Candelario. I've been a Raton businessman for over 40 years. I am retired from the New Mexico Corrections Department in Springer. I was a facility trainer there. I'm also retired from the New Mexico National Guard, 30 years. I've been through good and bad times in Raton. I have always had a positive attitude about Raton. I, like many businessmen, downsized when the mine closed and the racetrack went away. I'm still here. During the bad times, I implemented some of the training that I received in the military. I envisioned where will I be five years from now, 10 years from now? I made a plan to get where I wanted to be. I used the backward planning method, which means you plan from where you want to be back to where you are now. I then initiated action and implemented the steps that I would require to take to get to where I want to be. This is what the city manager and the city commission do. The primary job of the commissioners is to hire a city manager. Once this is accomplished, the city manager is the chief administrator and economic developer. He administers the day-to-day duties, hires and fires employees, makes recommendations about expending funds, and advises the city about how much money the city needs to operate. The job of the commissioners is to advise and support the manager when he makes requests for money and support him when he makes executive decisions. The job of the city manager, the commission, along with the support groups such as Grow Raton, the Downtown Main Street, the Chamber of Commerce, and the local citizens, is to make a vision of what they want Raton to be and then go out and make it happen. Thank you, Raton Professional Business Women's Association, for presenting this forum. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final opening statement will be Roy Manfredi.
Good evening, and thank you all for attending. You people at home, the same thing. Take your time out. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Roy Manfredi. I'm also known as Judge, and I've been the judge for the last 20 years. It's a position that I enjoy. My mind is still fairly clear, so I would like to continue to serve as judge. I was born and raised in Raton. Unlike Mr. Giacomo, I was born on South Sixth Street at Miners Hospital. Graduated from Raton High School, 65, went into the Navy, got out of the Navy, went to work for the Albuquerque Police Department, retired there, went to work at the racetrack and became the judge, and that's pretty much the short of it. As the judge, I handle petty misdemeanor cases, from barking dogs to drunk drivers. I did a little over 1,300 cases last year, 1,200 the year before that, and that's really down quite a bit from when I started in the 90s. My court has received hundreds of thousands of dollars' worth of grants. We have our computer system paid for. We've had the court remodeled. I'm from the generation that believes in freebies, and the administrative office of the court will give you money to maintain your courts. And so I believe in asking, and I do. I don't think that there's been a year since I've been the judge that we didn't get something. That's about all I have. I believe that less is more, and so we should go on to the questioning.
Thank you. And our first question is for all commission candidates. In order to help fund Raton's economic development, are you willing to support an increase in the gross receipts tax as permitted under the Local Economic Development Act? And our first question will start with District 1, Sandra Mance.
Am I willing to help fund an economic developer? Is that the gist of the question?
Help fund Raton's economic development. Are you willing to support an increase in the gross receipts tax?
Hard question. Nobody likes taxes, and we proposed taxes before just to help us balance our budget, and it was voted down. I do think that economic development is an important component of the city. I guess that before I could support an increase in gross receipts, I'd have to see a very comprehensive plan of action of what was going to take place and how we're going to progress forward in order to have economic development.
Thank you. Next will be District 2, Donald Giacomo.
To follow up on that, nobody likes to say, "I'm going to increase taxes." I do, or I am one for always having a plan. And I'd have to wait and see what kind of a plan would be submitted for the request of increasing for the fund. But at this time, until I get into office, if I am voted in, or I could see more detailed information, I'd have to say I would not be willing to increase the taxes.
Thank you. Next will be District 2, Bobby Ladue.
Tough question. You know, when you get to be in this office, those are the questions that are asked all the time and so on and so forth. And as I mentioned in my opening statement, you know, building a city is like building a house. You must develop a good foundation before you start expanding. I think we have a lot of critical areas that need to be addressed within our city before we start raising taxes. I think we're already known in the state for having the highest taxes, the highest utility rates, and that's not what we want to get known for. I think that we have some health and safety issues out there that are much more critical in my mind than going out and reaching to do other things. We're not prepared to get anybody at this point in time until we take care of what we have to do within the city. And I think we've been working on that, and I think we've made a lot of progress in that area. Economic development just sounds good, but there's a lot of work behind solid economic development. I think that there's been a lot of taxes that have been passed that haven't done what they were intended to do. And I just think that raising taxes is not what we want to be known for, and that's not anything that I would look at lightly. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is District 3, Ronald Chavez.
As it stands right now, I would have to say no. I wouldn't support it. In my opening statement, you heard me say that until we've thoroughly read and understood everything, until that's shown to me and shows me that where the money's going to be spent and how it's going to be spent, raising any kind of tax is going to be one of the last things that I'm going to recommend.
Thank you. Next is Christopher Candelario, District 3.
The city has about three ways to actually raise money. Raise taxes or increase taxes, levy franchise fees on people like Raton Waterworks, Verizon, people that use the facilities, property of the city. The third way is to spur the economy. We did try raising a franchise fee of sorts, and a referendum was generated, and we don't have that money. Again, everybody here has said we will have to study and study hard, cutting expenses or budgeting and what have you. That is the first thing we do between now and July is make a budget. And if we don't have the reserves, if we don't have the money, it's very possible the state could come in and take over Raton. Then there will be no franchises. It'll just be the state paying Raton's bills. The last- The last, last thing I want to do is raise taxes, but yes, if it's necessary, I would have to say yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question is for all commission candidates, but first I wanted to give a reminder to the audience that questions of a personal nature will not be asked. For all commission candidates, to reduce the blight of rundown homes, some of which are not even habitable, are you willing to go through the process of having these homes torn down, billing the property owners for the cost of demolition, and if the property owners do not pay, foreclosing on these properties and making them available to develop affordable housing? We will start this question with District Two, Donald Giacomo.
First of all, as a property owner, I think it's up to everybody to keep up their properties in a presentable way. Sometimes it cannot be because of economic problems, and I, for one, would not want to see a house tore down without the people who own it's consent. If they're not willing to work with the city on trying to upkeep it, I think other measures have to be looked into, what could be done, rather than have the property destroyed unless it is a completely gutted-out situation where it's hopeless to even try to rehabilitate it. So again, my voice or vote would be to not tear down a house unless you have a committee maybe set up behind you to back you up to see if there's other means that could be done.
Thank you. Next will be District Two, Bobby Ladue.
Thank you. The city of Raton has in place an ordinance that addresses this very issue. A lot of things come into play when you try to enact that ordinance or enforce that ordinance. I think there is a tremendous amount of liability that lies within the city before you can do that, which is why it seems like sometimes it's slow, and so on and so forth. I think that we've made a lot of progress in this area. I think the El Portel is a prime example of that. I think that, you know, there's just, our insurance agencies and our attorneys are pretty hard things to overcome when you try to address these issues. And I agree. I think there are, you know, I think that property owners should be a little bit prider of the property they have. I also own several properties in Raton, and I try to maintain them in the best way possible. And we do, you know, notify people when we think there's an issue.
Thank you. Next will be District Three, Ronald Chavez.
Yeah, I believe the same thing, that, you know, the blight and how they look. I've always said, "It's all right to be poor, but, you know, rake your yard, fix your house. You don't have to be a pig about it." As far as, am I going to support the city? I think that they would have to go through all the zoning laws and all that, and once they do and the people are ignoring it, then I think that they should be brought to bear.
Next is District Three, Christopher Candelario.
Raton has a lot of burned-out and abandoned buildings. People have left. Some of these people you can't even find. To tear down a building, it takes an environmental inspection to start off with. In other words, you have to get an environmentalist to go in there and make sure there's no asbestos or any dangerous items. Meth, for one. The cost on this, to tear down a building, inspection alone is around fifteen-hundred dollars. To tear one down runs about fifteen-thousand dollars. Again, we have to address the budget and whether we're going to put that kind of money into tearing down these buildings. So far, we have not. Thank you.
Next is Sandra Mance with District One.
It's true that we have a lot of blight within Raton. We also have a lot of people that cannot afford to upgrade their homes, unfortunately. And we also have a lot of absentee owners. There's a whole process that you have to go through in order to tear down a house or to even eminent domain where you take that property over. Unfortunately, the first end, the front end of this whole process costs the city considerable amount of money, and at this point in time, we do not have that kind of money to be able to do this process. I want to thank different organizations within the city that have done programs where they've helped people paint their houses, or rake their yards, or whatever, if the people are not capable of doing it themselves. Unfortunately, at this time, with our budgetary limitations, I'm sad to say that there's probably not a whole lot that we can do.
Thank you. Our next question is for all commission candidates. Are you willing to grant tax relief as an incentive for new businesses to locate here? What additional incentives would you consider to attract new business to Raton? And we will start this question with District Two, Bobby Ladue.
These are pretty tough hypothetical questions that people are asking. I think you guys are making us earn our spot up here. I think that, let me get my train of thought here. Can you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
Sure. Are you willing to grant tax relief as an incentive for new businesses to locate here?
Our hands are tied with respect to one, what we can and can't do. I think we cannot, we have the anti-donation clause that we can't go, that we can't cross. We have, first of all, we don't have any money anyway. I think that the money that we have, we are barely hanging on and barely developing a budget that meets the guidelines of the state of New Mexico. I think that that is something that would be nice to do. You know, I think that one of the things that I always preach all around everywhere I go is that Raton is special in that we own our own infrastructure, you know, but owning it and being able to come up with these type of plans sometimes is not possible.
Thank you. Next is District Three, Ronald Chavez.
Yes, I think that in order to lure businesses here, unfortunately, I don't think there's going to be another big mine as employees, five-hundred people, but I did some research and I've called some people on the municipal league, and they said that you can do some incentives. They have to be in the manufacturing type. You can't do it for a retail business, but if you have somebody out there that's willing to locate here and bring some employees, remembering that each dollar that's spent goes around eight times, well, then what we need to do is, if it's at all possible, we need to offer some, some kind of incentive to draw them here. Doesn't have to be a long-term incentive, but let's get them here and get them started.
Next is District Three, Christopher Candelario.
Thank you. Again, Mr. Ladue stated about the anti-donation clause. Part of the problem we're having with the Southwest Chief is the state constitution says we cannot build a railroad. The state is working around that. They've established that we can repair a railroad, but we cannot build a railroad. So we have a chance to get some money for that. Incentives, the only thing that we can do right now is maybe provide a building at a reasonable cost. As an example, the Armex Plaza. A few years ago, we evicted the city of Raton from there because it was reserved for economic development. However, the upgrade of the building is a couple of hundred thousand dollars to get it, where a building, where a manufacturer could come in. We've got other industries. We've got the hollow metal companies. We've got the pellet company outside of town. We've got the ranchers out there. We need to support those people. We need to give them encouragement and try to help them economically. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is District One, Sandra Mance.
I'm willing to support tax relief as long as it's within the law. When I first became a commissioner, I wanted, I was, before I became a commissioner, I was a member of Raton Main Street, and I wanted to try to find an avenue where businesses, especially in the downtown area, could refurbish their business and maybe remodel the inside and not be penalized in property taxes. So I thought, well, maybe we could give them an incentive that for five years their property taxes would not be raised. So first I went to the city manager, who said he had no authority over this. Then I went to the county manager, and he informed me that that was totally against the law. So there, you know, we have a lot of roadblocks when we try to do these things, unfortunately. But anything that we can do that is within the law, I would definitely support.
Next is District Two, Donald Giacomo.
I'd have to go along to say that we should be willing to help any new industry that may come in Raton. Again, there are laws like the other candidates have expressed, and I, for one, do not know every piece of the law that would be involved, but I believe it'd be well worth the effort to research it and find out what we can do. Again, thinking back a few months or years on the racetrack deal, you know, we tried to do something there, and we're kind of suffering the pains now of what got started. But again, with a little research or advise from legal counsel, I believe that maybe we should try to do what we can to get a new, you know, to help a new industry that comes in here.
Thank you. Our next question is for both of the judges. Do you feel that Raton has a problem with the number of burglaries that have taken place over the years? How do you plan to address this situation, and why do you feel that this problem has continued to happen on an almost daily basis? We will start with Linda Zuflotz.
Yes, I do feel that there are too many burglaries and other crimes in this town. We just, my husband and I just had someone attempt to steal some building equipment from our backyard, and they messed up our fence in the process. So definitely, I feel especially the judge needs to do what they can to fight crime. Of course, a municipal judge is restricted to petty misdemeanors, and sometimes these are felony events that occur, and the municipal judge has no power to do anything about them. But to the extent that I could do something as municipal judge, which is fines of five-hundred dollars or less and three months in jail, I would certainly do that if it helped to deter crime in the area.
Thank you. Next is Roy Manfredi.
Well, burglaries are a felony. We don't handle felonies. We handle petty misdemeanors. There's always too many burglaries if there's one, and especially if you're the victim. The problem becomes the courts don't instigate crime prevention. This is a police matter. The police enforce the ordinances, and they bring them to the judge. The judge sits in the middle and determines guilt or innocent, guilty or not guilty, and it's just not a role that I see the municipal court having anything to do with or any way we can stop it. We do handle petty misdemeanor larcenies, and for that, it's usually a fine. Incarceration is an option, but it costs the city seventy-five dollars a day to put somebody in jail, and as the city commissioners keep telling us, we don't have any money.
Thank you. The next question is also for the municipal judge candidates. Do you feel that these burglaries have affected new businesses coming here, and has it affected the people that are considering moving here to retire? And we will start with Roy Manfredi.
I don't know whether anybody gets on the internet and sees how many burglaries we have, but we don't, as a per capita, we don't have an exorbitant amount of burglaries, an out-of-line number. And again, it's, judges don't have anything to, I don't know how many burglaries we've had, so I can't say it's too many or not. Whether it's affected people that moved here, I'm not so sure that's the case. A lot of the residents that we have moved in are here from the NRA, Whittingham Center. Most of those are armed, and so they're not that concerned with burglaries.
Thank you. Next is Linda Zuflotz.
Well, I'm actually more, I mean, I think there's a lot of crime that needs to be dealt with in Raton. As we said, as municipal judges, we can't handle anything but the more minor crimes that occur. But I think things like drug use and the homes and yards that are dilapidated and the abandoned vehicles and things like that are a big deterrent to people moving here also.
Thank you. Our next question is for all commission candidates. What specific ideas do you have to improve the condition of our city's economy? And we will start this question with District Three, Ronald Chavez.
Is there a big question on my time?
Yes. What specific ideas do you have to improve the condition of our city's economy?
Well, that's a pretty hard one right there. So the specific ideas at this time, you know, I would have to get into the budget, and Mr. McGowan has been doing an excellent job, and he gave us a budget the other day, and gee whiz, you've got to be an accountant to read it, you know? But to attract businesses and stuff like that, then I would have to say that we could, we'd have to really look at it, and at this point, I can't make an informed decision.
Thank you. Next is District Three, Christopher Candelario.
Again, I have a vision of Raton. I see great neighborhoods. I see safe city. I see good government. I see quality physical assets. This is my vision for the healthy economy. The completion of the casino has greatly increased the number of job opportunities in Raton. New businesses supporting the racetrack casino has caused an influx of new citizens who have occupied the existing housing. New housing subdivisions have been established, resulting in a boom in the construction industry. Visitors from Texas, Oklahoma, Kansas, and Colorado are drawn here because of the cool mountain air, the growing art district, and the friendly service of Raton merchants. The farming and ranching industry in the area use Raton as a headquarters for their cattle, horse, and crop sales. The Southwest Chief efficiently delivers visitors and boy scouts to the new multimodal center on First Street. Right now, the only thing we don't have is the racetrack and the multimodal center. The multi-center, multimodal center is on the way. Don't be so down, people. This is our town. Be positive. We have to get this thing going. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is District One, Sandra Mance.
My philosophy on economic development has always been to take care of what we have. And whenever I attend meetings, I sit on the North Central Economic Development Council, and whenever I have an opportunity to speak, I talk about, Raton has, for economic development, we have something called tracks. One is the railroad track, and one is the racetrack, for the time being at least. And I've attended meetings and And, uh, I've attended meetings in Pueblo, uh, four meetings in Las Vegas, and I believe five meetings in Santa Fe on the Southwest Chief. Now, my take on the Southwest Chief is I'd like it to stay. But more importantly, I like to keep those tracks that it's running on so that someday we can return to having freighters come through Raton.
Next is District Two, Donald Giacomo.
Well, I follow the guidelines of what Sandra's talking about. Uh, I think we need to put our eff- keep our efforts in. For the present time, the Santa Fe, uh, Burlington line, as far as trying to keep, keep, or get the finances to keep maintaining it, so it will be here for future use if, whenever that happens. I believe we have more, at the, at the present time, we have more, uh, going for us on, uh, providing funds for that than seeking the track, the racetrack. Don't get me wrong, I'm all for racing. I love racing. I've been, uh, a horse, a horse owner, and would like to see the track come back, but I think for the time being, we need to focus our efforts on keeping the Santa Fe Burlington here as lo- uh, for as long as we can. As Sandra says, hopefully get some more freights coming this way.
Next is District Two, Bobby Ladue.
Job as a commissioner is to always look at new ideas, new resources, and things like that to attract, uh, more people to our economy. One of the things that I'd like to do is, uh, you know, is reach out to our federally-elected officials and have them, you know, pass a bill that gives, you know, municipalities like ours a set amount of money. They did this back in the early eighties, mid-eighties, and it was wonderful. I think they allowed municipalities five hundred thousand dollars, and with that five hundred thousand dollars, you could use that as seed money to attract new businesses and help them out within their first, you know, five to ten years of business with no interest paid. So, it was actually free money with no interest. And I thought that was a wonderful idea, and I'd like to see that implemented again. In fact, I've talked to, uh, Senator Udall and Representative Luhann and, and trying to entice them with that idea, and I think that we may have something started here. Also, our local elected officials need to be aggressively, uh, you know, also addressed and also challenged to help our economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question is for non-incumbent city commission candidates. What, if any, are the one or two major decisions made by the city commission in the past three years on which you would have voted differently from the majority, and why? We will start with Donald Giacomo, District Two. What, if any, are the one or two major decisions made by the city commission in the past three years on which you would have voted differently from the majority, and why?
Well, going back in the past two years, my biggest concern was the, uh, hiring and giving the raise of the former, past former city manager. Uh, there was a lot of money involved there. I don't know all the details on it, but I, I do know at the time that I felt pretty disappointed in the way his, uh, contract read. That was my biggest disappointment.
Next is Ronald Chavez, District Three.
Uh, yeah, this is, uh, there's several things that I've seen in the past that, um, one, in my opinion, was that ridiculous suit that we went after our own, um, well, I mean, our own electric department. That cost us taxpayers a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. It was ill-advised, in my opinion, and as the courts proved that, uh, they had to back off from it. The other one, again, was, was the, um, the, uh, taking of our city manager and, uh, giving him a free rein. And, uh, the commissioners, some of the commissioners that were here, uh, they acted on that. And I just, uh, think, uh, ridiculously, uh, giving him raises like that was, that was bad. That really was.
Thank you. Our next question is for everyone. How would you go about increasing the level of civic engagement in the city of Raton? Are there changes that can be made to the way the city and residents work together to make the governance process more meaningful for everyone? We will start with District Three, Christopher Candelario.
Level of civic engagement. We have Grow Raton. See, Mr. Jenkins out here. He's got a wonderful, wonderful organization. It's a group of people. They're a 401(c)(3) non-taxable. They don't have anything to do with Raton except for trying to develop Raton. They're trying to set up a, uh, a plan for Raton, set up studies for Raton so they can develop, uh, industry. You need to be positive. You need to get out there and talk Raton up. Every time I'm looking in a blog and see the nasty stuff that's in there, I cringe because I'm not the only one that looks at it. People from all over the nation look at this. We have to be together. We have to push together. The last time I saw us pushed together was when the racetrack, uh, was a big issue. Uh, as far as getting people to get motivated, I think we have the leaders, such as, again, Mr. Jenkins, we have the Chamber of Commerce, we have the Downtown Main Street, uh, and our local citizens. Most of you are the silent majority. You sit there and you wait for somebody else to do it. You can't do that. You've got to get busy. Thank you.
Next will be Roy Manfredi.
Well, I, I don't know exactly what the judge can do for economic development, but I, I do believe that we have maybe one too many organizations. I think we have Grow Raton and the Downtown and different ones. And I think that if we combine those efforts to one, uh, organization, um, and, and use what we have. We, we are a well-known outdoor destination. Vermejo Ranch brings in thousands of, uh, hunters, and they pass right through Raton. The NRA south of Raton, they have a hundred thousand visitors. What, we need to get them more involved in Raton. I like the way the Arts Council is going. I think we have a strong Arts Council. And we have a beautiful state park in Sugar Eet, and we need to be more on what we have for the positive. And I agree with Christopher. I don't read those blogs and stuff, but there are some nasty people in Raton, and I don't understand, uh, why they're so down on the town. If they don't like it, they should leave.
Thank you. Next is District One, Sandra Mance.
That's what I like most about the forum is passing the microphone. Civic engagement, um, to me, that may mean something a little bit different than what the other, does to the other candidates. But if you want people to become involved in their community, I think first of all, you have to listen to them and respect their opinion. You may not agree with them, but, uh, you can always state your side of the argument. But if you don't even listen, or if you don't even speak, there's not a whole lot that we can do. Uh, I want to compliment the, the individuals that sit on the RPS board for the work that they do, as well as the people that sit on the Water Board. These people are definitely civically engaged in our community. And of course, we are all, we've always been blessed with the many different, uh, organizations within Raton that are willing to step up and handle some of the things that the city doesn't have the money or the manpower to handle. So, I want to personally thank you for doing that.
Next is District Two, Donald Giacomo.
Um, being new, new to all this myself, I hear a lot about the Grow Raton and the Arts Council and the other, uh, committees that are out there. And I know it's gotta be hard to try to get, uh, some of the help that they request to do some of the projects, but again, uh, like Sandra says, uh, getting, listening, getting knowledge from the citizens and trying to, uh, please them and hear them out. I think that's a, a number one step that we need to, uh, take to continue our efforts to improve the city econom- economically and, uh, beautif- for beautification and stuff like that, you know. Again, a great hand for the ones who's been doing this. Thank you.
Next is municipal judge candidate Linda Zufflock.
Um, I believe that we need, um, in order to help get more people involved in the community, we need to, number one, work with the students to get them involved so that, uh, new generations, uh, come out more informed and more willing to serve. I also think that we need to be welcoming of people who want to, to give new ideas to the community and, um, not have them met with, um, rebuffs from some of the people here. I think forums like this one, uh, are a good idea. I think community forums on different topics from time to time would be a good way to get people involved, and I think that's an important thing to do.
Next is District Two, Bobby Ladue.
Thank you, Ray. Civic movement is not a problem in Raton. I think that Raton business professional women prove that. I think there's a lot, Mr. Jenkins proves that. I think the job as a commission is to help them, validate them, and point them in the direction that we need to, to, so that they can access funds to carry their mission and their challenges. There's money that's available out there. We just need to work with them a little closer on, you know, on going in that direction together. I think we, we can do that. I think that we have a ton of challenges in front of us, and little by little, we're meeting those challenges, and this is an area that I think that do we, we do need to further address. Thank you.
Next is Ronald Chavez, District Three.
I also believe in the fact that, uh, organizations are doing really well for Raton. Uh, one of the main things that I feel though is informed citizens, they usually always step up. And, uh, if you reach out to them and tell them everything that's going on and what's needed, Raton is famous for that. They get a lot of, uh, of involvement out of the public. So, I think that, uh, with our, with our, uh, organizations that are here in town, they're doing a good job. I think we ought to just make sure that they're always informed, and we reach out to these people.
Thank you. This next question is for all of our candidates except Sandra Mance. What sets you aside from your opponent? And we will start this question with municipal judge candidate Roy Manfredi.
Well, I've been the judge for twenty years, um, and she hasn't been the judge at all.
Next we'll have District Two, Donald Giacomo.
Well, Roy, I wish I could top you on that one. But my, well, the thing is, sets me aside, or sets me aside from my, uh, my opponent, uh, that's a tough one to say because he's the mayor and I'm not. So, the only thing I could say is, uh, Bobby, you've done a good job for, for the last six months, and, uh, I really have nothing bad to say about you other than I'm running against you and hope I could beat you.
Next, we have municipal judge candidate Linda Zufflock.
I guess what sets me apart is I haven't been judge yet, and I'd like to be. Uh, I think I have, well, I know, I have, uh, extensive background in municipal government, and I really would like to be the judge of Raton.
Next is District Two, Bobby Ladue.
I told Don, I'm not gonna tell him I'm the mayor and you're not. You know, I, um, have been one to pat myself on the back. I just wanna remind people that, you know, I was accosted. I was asked to serve on this commission when the former mayor resigned unwillingly. You know, I was able to twist my wife's arm, and she allowed me to do it. And we've come a long ways. I think that the thing that I really like is that we've opened the meetings up to the public. We've allowed freedom within the city, you know. We, you virtually don't hear a recall anymore. I think my experience speaks for itself. I think I was able to provide that leadership. I was provide, able to provide that buffer that brought the commission together. I think my experience is nine years as a commissioner, former president of the Rattle Municipal League, board of director of the Municipal League for seven years, and my involvement with many boards and functions, I think, give me the qualifications to do the job. I mean, I'm, obviously, I'm wanting to do the job. I wouldn't have put my name on there. And I, you know, and I think that, you know, I just patting yourself on the back is not one of my key things, but thank you.
Next is District Three, Ronald Chavez.
I have, uh, nothing all to, bad to say about my opponent. He's been a, a commissioner for a long time. But I do think that the, the new commissioner needs to get a little more aggressive. They need to be more open with the people. They need to, uh, seek out and find new ways to, to, uh, take care of our, uh, of our, uh, budget. And, uh, other than that, uh, I'm just gonna make a run at him and see if, uh, up to the people to decide if you're satisfied with what's been going on or if you want some change.
Next is District Three, Christopher Candelario.
Some of our similarities, uh, Ron Chavez was born in Raton, so was I. We've all graduated from Raton High School, class of sixty-seven, sixty-four.
Class of sixty-four.
We all love Raton. We're gonna die here. Yay. I've been involved, and that's a good thing. I've got my plots. I've been involved in the city off and on since nineteen ninety-eight. I ran for city commission and was elected. Four years later, I was defeated by a ton of votes. I ran again in two thousand eight, I believe, against Sandy Mance, and I was defeated again by a ton of votes. After the recall election, I, I put my name in, and one of the people that selected me or appointed me was Ms. Mance, and I appreciate that very much. She's a good mentor. She's very knowledgeable. After my term was up, I ran for the two-year term because I thought two years is enough. I'm getting out. Well, my two years is up, and I wanna stay another four years. Uh, anyway, that's, that's what I wanna do. I wanna do the best for the city. Thank you.
Our next question is for Mr. Chavez and Mr. Giacomo. Please give the caring citizens of Raton your thoughts on the successes of RPS and the Water Board. Is it significant that with their city currently unable to act as a fiscal agent of public funds, that RPS has offered to provide this necessary function for Raton pro bono? And we will start with District Two, Donald Giacomo.
Well, I've been attending a lot of the meetings as far as with the RPS Board and also with the Water Board. Not as many with the Water Board as I'd like to have. Both entities have a lot of major problems facing them, and, uh, RPS, you know, it's come a long ways. They have good people in charge, and I feel very confident that they're, and also the Water Board does too. I feel that they, they're able to take charge of what the problems lie ahead, and they've been planning for it. As far as the Water Department, Lake Malloy Dam has the major problem that they're looking at and need to be corrected, and they've already got some of the monies appropriated, and hopefully going to get some more from the state. The RPS, again, very confident people as far as I'm concerned, and they just need to be left alone to deal with their own in-house problems. They're doing a very good job as far as I'm concerned.
Next is District Three, Ronald Chavez.
Uh, Susanna Martinez, the governor, she gave an executive order, which was two zero one three dash zero zero six, and in that order, it encompasses a lot of things, but she also indicated that capital outlay money that we've asked for would not be awarded to us as long as we have a, what you call a dirty audit. But at the last meeting that I was at, the RPS Board, they offered the olive branch. They reached out and offered to be the fiscal agent for Raton until such time that we get our audit in order. The RPS has been an entity for forever, and, you know, we have two things here that are really good for the, for the community, and that's, we have our own water and we have our own power. And I think any move to jeopardize either one of those is a, is a misjustice. The people, you know, the people got behind the last one whenever the, there was, they were trying to get to the thing, to get to the franchise and break it, but the people acted then and they said, no, don't, we're not gonna do that. Thirty seconds? All right, anyway, our two, our Water Department and our, and our, and our RPS Board, I believe too, they need to be left alone. They've been working great as they are, and so I don't think that they should be messed with.
This next question is for all commission candidates. Gross receipts taxes cover about seventy-five percent of city revenues. In a struggling economy, gross receipts tax revenues have declined. What services or changes do you see are needed to maintain a balanced budget? We will start with District One, Sandra Mance.
If gross receipts are down, it's for two reasons. We're either not buying our goods in Raton, or people aren't reporting their taxes. I'm not sure that there's anything that we can do, except support the businesses that are already here as much as we can. Every time you spend a dollar in Raton, we get a portion of that in gross receipts, and gross receipts is the main place that the city does get its money. Other than that, I have nothing else to say.
Next is District Two, Donald Giacomo.
Uh, same thing, like Sandra says, the gross receipts tax originate here in Raton by the people who do the shopping here, and what can be done about increasing that? Being new to the, to try to get into commission, I don't have the answers for that this time. I think when I get in there, I'll try to dig deeper and get more acquainted with the budget and how it actually works, but at this time, I really don't have an answer for that.
Next is District Two, Bobby Ladue.
You know, Raton is a, we suffer like most rural communities. You know, our gross receipts are declining all the time. Our challenge is, is to live within our means, and in my opinion, we haven't done that, and we're getting better. I think we've, bringing Mr. McGowan in was something that we needed to help stabilize and move us forward, and we're addressing that issue. I think Raton, what, our population used to be nine thousand, we're down at six thousand, yet we still have the administration that we had when we were at nine thousand. We must, you know, capitalize on all our resources. I've mentioned over and over in our meetings that we're not like the federal government. We can't print our money. We must live within our means, and that is and should be the goal of any commission.
Next is District Three, Ronald Chavez.
Yeah, I have to agree with the other commissioners and candidates. There's not much you can do about, other than unless we take a gun and hold them up, we're not gonna get much more of the gross receipts tax. But in the past, and it's been proven if you go back and look, our city and the past administration, they spent unwisely. They really did. So what you need to do is, we need to go over that budget and take it apart step by step. Like I told you before, I'm not an accountant, so I don't know. I'll have to be trained. I'll have to learn. But I think it need to go over it and find out where the money's going each and every time, and if we don't have the money, let's don't spend it. You know, simply at home, my wife Debbie says, you can't have any coffee because we're, you know, the budget doesn't have it, so that's what you have to live with. I think the city has to do the dang same thing. They just, what they have to do is they have to live within our budget, and the gross receipt tax, if we get more businesses in, they'll come, it'll start coming back up, and then we can get more liquid in our finances.
Next is District Three, Christopher Candelario.
Again, the magic bullet is more revenue. More businesses, more people stopping in and spending their money here, and see if we can keep our money that goes to Trinidad or to Colorado or to Pueblo or Albuquerque, and see if we can get our people to spend their money here. Without an increase in gross receipts tax, we have to cut expenses. That's the other side of it, and it's hard. The Aquatic Center, we addressed last year. We considered cutting it. I've got a ton of letters from people that use it for rehabilitation. They can't afford to go and pay money to get water therapy. They use the Aquatic Center, but that costs a lot of money. We have looked at that, and we may have to look at it again. Our reserves, if we wouldn't have had a fire at the senior citizens center a couple of years ago, we would not have a reserve. We'd be in big trouble. The biggest thing we need to do is, once the city manager makes a survey and makes some suggestions, I don't know what they're gonna be, but we have to support him. Thank you.
This next question is for Mayor Ladue. You have been attributed with making a statement recently about combining our two outstanding utility franchises into one department. If this is not factual, please set the record straight. If you are considering such an action, what better time than now to go public?
I've made, I've made several statements with respect to what I think we need to do to balance our budget. What I said is that we should consider looking at that option since our, the general manager from Raton Public Service resigned and nobody's been appointed. What I'm saying is that we must figure out how to reduce our, you know, our, reduce our debt within the city. I mean, right now, we're, the city of Raton is, we're a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in the hole beginning July first every year because we're dealing with some of the decisions that our predecessors made. And I'm not here to blame them for making bad or good decisions or whatever. They had different information than we had or that I was privy to with respect to making those decisions. I don't know. I can't speak for them, but I think we need to look at all options. I don't think that, you know, RPS has been a solvent company. It's been, you know, in existence for many, many years. So has the Water Department. I said, I think, I think that when you don't look at options and you don't open your eyes to options, then I think that you're missing the boat on some issues.
This next question is for all commission candidates. With the appointment of a new city manager upcoming, are you going to hire another headhunter firm to seek candidate? Shop Raton slogan is applicable here as well as on Main Street. We will start this question with District Two, Donald Giacomo.
Uh, headhunters are expensive, and I'm not sure what it cost last time to get a headhunter, to get us a city manager in here that didn't last. I'm against it, so, first of all, I'd like to see it go out publicly, or it is, matter of fact, I believe it is, an in-house posted for the city manager, for an in-house one. If that doesn't work, then of all means, by all means, my suggestion would be to stay in the local area, and as a last resort, then seek an outside candidate. But again, headhunters are too expensive for my book, and I think there's knowledgeable people here who could pick the right person if they're presented with some applicants.
Next is District Two, Bobby Ladue.
I've always believed in affirmative action, and I think you can ask the current city manager with respect to what my attitude is with respect to that. I think during my tenure, it's been involved with the Raton City Commission, I think we fired, probably hired three or four city managers, and we have never hired an independent firm to do our job. I think we're just as smart. We know what we want, and it's up to us to exercise and be frugal with the money that we have. Our money is very limited. This is an area that you elect us to do. We need to do that job, and we need to continue doing that. Thank you.
Next is District Three, Ronald Chavez.
I say no way to a headhunter regardless. You know, they, they make the, if I'm not mistaken, and I may be wrong, it was between ten and fifteen thousand for us to get the previous city manager. That money could have been used for other things. I believe, and I said in my opening statement, that we have qualified people right here in Raton, and we should exhaust that avenue of approach until you, unless you can't find anybody there. But also, just think about this. There are students that are out there that are kids that went to college that may want to come back to Raton. They may have a degree in this. We should reach out to, like I said, the local area first, and there's qualified people out there without having to go out of state. That should be the last resort. That should be the last resort. I think there's a lot of qualified people right here in Raton.
Next is District Three, Christopher Candelario.
Based on previous experience and recommendations of our existing city manager, I would not try to go out there and recruit from across the nation. We need somebody who is familiar with our culture. Raton's culture, Trinidad, even Las Vegas. Springer is a very unique culture. If you don't understand the people, you're gonna have problems. The biggest problem I have is the citizens who want to work and be the city manager need to apply. If nobody applies, what do we do? Thank you.
Next is District One, Sandra Mance.
Uh, I was on the commission when we did hire a firm to try to find us a city manager, and at the time, that seemed like the best decision. I was very disappointed in our outcome, but, you know, hindsight's twenty twenty. There has been a posting for the position of city manager within the employees of the city at this time. If we do not find someone that is satisfactory, then the next move, at least according to what I've been told, will be to advertise locally. If that doesn't fill our needs, then we probably will be advertising in the New Mexico Municipal League Bulletin. There's advertisements for all kinds of positions all the time. But what you have to remember, and I say I'm batting a thousand on city managers, I haven't done a very good job, and I hate the thought of having to hire another one, but some people interview very well. Some people have wonderful credentials, but you really don't know what that person is going to be or do until they actually fill the position. The talk is quite cheap. So it's been recommended to us, especially if we can find someone locally or with in-house, that that person serves at the pleasure of the commission and not be given a long-term contract, so that if the relationship does not grow or nurture, we would have the ability to get rid of that person.
I'm sorry, that's time. Our next question is for Sandra Mance and Bobby Ladue. RPS has been a big topic of discussion over the last year. They have money saved up and the city is struggling. We have seen weather cause major power outages costing power companies millions in repair costs. Should RPS share that money or should it stay in reserve? Do you feel the RPS franchise agreement adequately protects RPS from a money-hungry city commission? And we will start that question with District One, Sandra Mance.
I'm sorry, but I don't think we are a money-hungry city commission. RPS has a contract with the city, and it is a firm contract, and it affords them the money to operate as well as set aside much-needed reserves, one being that they have to have a thirty-day reserve for operation. They have to have a reserve for a capital outlay or replacement of their equipment. It goes right on down the line. I think these reserves are necessary. I also believe they need to be reviewed every so often, because I don't believe that Climax, not Climax Canyon, Burrow Canyon is one of the buckets of reserves, and I think maybe it, that it should be looked at. I don't know where we would, RPS or anyone else would come up with the money if we had problems with the Burrow Canyon line.
Next is District Two, Don Giacomo. Oh, I apologize. It is Mr. Ladue.
Thank you. I've been accused of not hearing sometime. No, I'm just teasing you. I think that, the thing that we need to remember is that our forefathers did a wonderful job in writing up that RPS franchise. I think they did a great job of protecting themselves, and I think at the time that it was written, you know, things were going great for the city. There was no money shortages. We had plenty of people here. We had a lot, you know, money to cover deficits and so on and so forth. I think that it's still a good franchise. We've been working with the franchise leaders to try to modify that so that they can assist the city out of a financial jam and ongoing thing. I think the city of Raton, you don't have very many places where you can access money. I think you can raise taxes. You can get it from your franchise, or, you know, or you don't get it at all. I think if you own a company, you should be able to derive- get it at all. I think if you own a company, you should be able to derive some benefit from that, you know, and I think that's, we're, we're headed in that direction. We've talked about extending that frags- franchise another twenty-five years and just tightening it up and modifying it a little bit. It, you know, I just, we just, I mean, the community is only as strong as your weakest link and it doesn't do us any good for one entity to be way up here and the rest of us down here. Thank you.
This next question is for Ron Chavez and Donald Jacamo. A lot of people look to city government to do, to be all especially econo- I'm sorry. A lot of people look to city government to do all, especially economic development and making the city grow, provide services and take care of us. Do you gr- do you agree or what do you think the role of city government is or should be? Is it the responsibility of city government to be the economic development group? Should the city government have enticements in place to attract businesses? And if so, what kinds of enticements should we have in place? We will start this question with District Three, Ronald Chavez.
Uh, the, uh, the city government, uh, I don't know how I put this, uh, but, uh, responsible for, for getting all of the, uh, of the economic development here? Uh, I don't believe so. I don't think it's the total, uh, responsibility of the city government. Um, I think here in the past, we've hired, uh, a, a city planner or, I mean, a, uh, econom- economic and development council, uh, counselor. So he's the one that, uh, that should be tasked with that. Uh, again, as I told you before, uh, the anti-donation clause that, uh, people keep referring to, it's, it's not, it's not as clear-cut as that. It was originally made in the eighteen hundreds to stop the railroad from raping the countryside and the people. But there are ways that you can go and ask for the money and give incentives to these people and, uh, as long as they're a manufacturer. You can't do it for a retail business. I've looked into that. You can't do it for just a retail business to come here. But for any kind of manufacturer that'll provide jobs, I believe that, uh, you can do that. So the city government shouldn't be totally in charge of that, no.
Next is District Two, Donald Jacamo.
Uh, I don't, I don't believe that the city government is require, or responsible for that myself either. Um, like Ron said, that, uh, we've hired, the city has hired a, a person to oversee that and, uh, as the, as city government, I think we need to work with him and, uh, follow up on some of the stuff that he has presented or tried to get in here. But again, uh, not knowing all the facts on, on what he actually has done or plans to bring in here, you know, it's just something that, until I, we get, if elected, we get in office and work with him, you know, at this point, I can't make a decision on that myself.
Thank you. Our next question is for the mayor. Last year, the city went out for bids for an RPS insurance policy. The top two bids were a hundred thousand dollars apart. The high bid was from a local agent, the lower bid from out of town. The city manager emphatically recommended accepting the lower bid and the commission voted to accept the lower out-of-town bid. You voted not to accept the lower bid. Had the vote gone your way, the taxpayers would have been out an extra one hundred thousand dollars. Can you explain your vote?
Certainly. I think that, but again, that we have, we're privy to more information than the, than the regular citizen is out there when these proposals are made. I think the thing that bothered me about that whole thing is we were not comparing apples to apples. It was apples to oranges. There was a lot of different, uh, there was a lot of different types of different coverages that were placed and presented to us and it wasn't a hundred thousand dollars either. It was twenty thousand dollars. But irrespective of that, you know, I think that, you know, we've had good, you know, insurance agents that, that have taken care of Raton and I think they were not, they, the bids were on com- two completely different, uh, sets of, you know, of standards and so on and so forth and that's why I objected to that.
Our next question is for all municipal judge candidates. Are you willing to support the city's efforts to foreclose on properties where the owners do not pay for the cost of demolish- demolishing rundown and uninhabitable, uninhabitable structures? We will start this question with Linda Zouflot.
Uh, to the extent that the municipal judge can, uh, enforce these ordinances for people to clean up their yards and their buildings, I believe we should do that. And I understand that there are people that don't have the money to demolish their homes or, or to, uh, maybe to even clean up some of the junk in the cars and stuff that are in their yards. But letting them continue to get away with that kind of behavior only keeps the city in a, in a downward, uh, thrust, I believe. I think we need to enforce the ordinances that we have. Someone the other day, a businessman complained to me about, um, not enforcing the parking rules on Second Street and said that people were parking at his business, in front of his business all day and his customers were complaining. And he told me, well, if we'd enforced those ordinances, people wouldn't be able to do that. And as far as the petty criminals and those acts that they're committing, I understand the city doesn't have the money perhaps to, uh, incarcerate these people, but it's only gonna escalate if you don't punish the people. And I think in some instances, we need to find the money to put them in jail.
Next is Roy Manfredi.
Would you repeat that?
Are you willing to support the city's efforts to foreclose on properties where the owners do not pay for the cost of demolishing, rundown and uninhabitable structures?
Well, first off, um, I don't support the city or the citizens. I sit in the middle and I hear cases and the zoning officer brings those cases before my court. If he proves, beyond a reasonable doubt, to me that there's been a violation of a city ordinance and I rule in the city's favor. If he doesn't, I don't. Beyond that, courts do not, under any circumstance, instigate actions against citizens except for failing to appear. So if they park on the street, it's not the court's job. It's the police's job to cite them and bring them before the court. But I will do no more than what the constitution and the laws of the state of New Mexico require me to do.
The next question is for the sitting commissioners. With your knowledge of the city's finances, what is your proposal or plan to address the general finance shortfalls? We will start this question with District Two, Bobby Ladue.
Any plan that we have at this time to address that financial plan is not gonna be very popular. I think the one thing that we've, that we've looked at and we continue to look at is can we do more with less? I think we've looked at, you know, several things. I mean, the thing that we wanna do and that we've worked to do is to, is to, is to make all the franchises equal throughout the city. And I think that if that would happen, that would, you know, certainly enable us to proceed in a much better, uh, road. I think that we're almost there. We've made a lot of progress and anytime you have to raise taxes or put possible increases, it's a tough job. But I'd rather us do it than be put in receivership by the state of New Mexico and we're close to that. Thank you.
Next is District Three, Christopher Candelario.
Very soon. Actually, act- right after the election, the city commissioners and the city manager have to get together and figure out how we're going to pay the bills. It's an educated guess. And after we get through making the guess, we scratch our head because we're short a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Raise taxes. Let's see what happens as far as referendums are concerned. The only other place we have is to cut the, uh, again, the, uh, services that the city provides. Raton Public Service and their agreement does have a franchise fee, uh, due to the rat- city of Raton. However, in their budget system, in their buckets, they call them buckets, which is reserves, all the reserves have to be filled before Raton's, uh, franchise fee is paid. This will never happen. Uh, I believe that we need to keep working with Raton Public Service and see if we can work out something with them. Thank you.
Next is District One, Sandra Mance.
RPS does pay a franchise fee in the form of providing electricity to the city and it's a, a large amount of money because of course they have to buy the power and they pass it on to the city and we don't pay anything for it. So that has to be considered. Um, budget shortfalls, um, unless we can generate some money, put a printing press in the back room, the only way that you can do away with a shortfall is to reduce your expenses. Now, we, we say we're a hundred and fifty thousand dollars short and that may be an accurate figure. I do not know. But we will be getting a, uh, check from the state called Small City Assistance and I believe last year it was something like a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. And we will also be receiving our portion of the second half of the property taxes, which will help us. And Michael Ann has given me, I don't really know how many more employees we can cut. We only have like four people in our street department and, uh, our parking rec- uh, department and, uh, we're pretty close to, down to bare bones.
This next question is for District Two, Bobby Ladue. If elected, what will you do differently?
I don't, I'm not sure I'd do anything differently. I know, I've kind of enjoyed working with this past commission. I think it's been nice, you know, getting together with, you know, and moving forward. I think we've stabilized City Hall. I think it's no longer the public ridicule place. I think, you know, people don't have to go over there and get turned on about being able to address the commission and things of this nature. I think there's many, many, many challenges that are facing us. If elected, I think I have the experience and I have the, the business know-how of how to meet those challenges and address those changes. I think I've proven that with respect to my past record. I think I was, as I mentioned to you earlier, I was elected as president of the New Mexico Municipal League. That's quite an honor. I think that, you know, we're talking about, you know, about three or four thousand elected officials out there and if you're the, the chairperson or the president of that, I think that pretty much shows you, you have some leadership skills. I think I've proven that. I've shown that and obviously I wanna continue doing that. That's why I'm running. Thank you.
We are going to go ahead and move on to our closing statements. Um, our first closing statement will be Roy Manfredi, municipal judge candidate.
Well, I'd like to thank you all for attending. I hope you have a better idea of who you're gonna vote for. And with that, I ask you to turn out on March the fourth or before and cast your ballot. Um, I, uh, I believe it's beneath the dignity of a court to ask you to vote for the judge. And the reason I think that is, is because if I say to you this evening, please vote for me and you do, then the week after that, you get a ticket and you come before me and say, I got a ticket. I'm gonna have to say I'm sorry about that. So what I want you to do is vote for whoever you want to judge you.
Next will be District Three, Christopher Candelario.
I want to be part of Raton's vision. The foundations have been laid. The city office staff are in place and now have experience doing their jobs. The city employees, Raton Waterworks and Raton Public Service employees are the most dedicated people that I have ever known. I have a vision for Raton. I envision great neighborhoods, a safe city, a healthy economy, good government and quality physical assets. I want to be part of the plan to accomplish this goal. Please vote for me. Thank you.
Next is District Three, Ronald Chavez.
First off, I want to take this time to thank the ladies for putting this on and for you people to come out and listen to us. Uh, when I took the oath going into the military, you raise your right hand and you say, I will defend the Constitution of the United States. Well, the preamble to the Constitution makes my heart get warm when I hear the, the first three words of the preamble says, we, the people. We, the people. That means you. That means us. So what I'd like for you to do is I'd like for you to vote for who you think will do the best job for the upcoming years and remembering all the time that we don't work for the city. We work for you. So try to remember that. I appreciate it.
Next is District Two, Bobby Ladue.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the people of Raton and the city commission that I've worked with. I think that I've, I've, I've seen us grow quite a bit in the past year and I think we've made a lot of str- I think Billy's doing that on purpose. And I, and I, I think that, you know, that we're headed in the right direction. But I think the most important thing to do when you go vote for somebody is, you know, vote for the person that you think that can do the job. Vote for the person that you think has the most experience, that you think that can represent you well, you know, at other levels besides you in Raton. I think I'm that person, you know. I, you know, I've nev- I've always respected the electorate process. I think it's most, one of the most wonderful things. I wanna thank the candidates up here for taking the time to bother to sign up and run. I mean, you know, running for office is a scary thing. To be judged by your peers is not an easy thing to face. I think unfortunately, there's gonna be some losers. I, I wish we could expand the council or the commission and include all these people here. I think they have some good ideas. I think they're, obviously they're, you know, they're dedicated or they wouldn't be here. And it takes a lot of courage to do that. So just remember, vote on March fourth and, you know, expect something from your leaders. Expect them, question them, you know. You know, ex- you know, you're, you're in control. This is your recall vote, so take advantage of it. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Next is municipal judge candidate, Linda Zouflot.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming to and thank you for putting on this forum. Uh, if I'm elected municipal judge, I can promise you that I will work as hard as I can to make sure that our ordinances are enforced and that people aren't just given a slap on the hand and told to go their way and continue doing whatever they're doing. I believe we need to have a strong municipal judge who will in-